Everybody and welcome. This is our Tuesday regular business meeting of the Mason County Commission for March 12th, 2024. We're going to go ahead and begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Dean Jewitt, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Dean. Roll call, please.
Commissioner District One, Randy Vanderland.
I'm here.
Commissioner District Two, Kevin Schutte.
Here.
Commissioner District Three, Sharon Trask.
Okay, we have a quorum. Next up is item number four, correspondence and organizational business. Mackenzie, do you have correspondence to come before the board?
I do. Eric Anisco, Randy Lewis, Matt Mallory, Jim Morrell, Mary Jo Katie, and Jan Goodpastor sent in applications for the Mason County Citizens Commission on Salaries for Elected Officials. Ward and Heidi Anderson sent in a letter of concern regarding Mason County's plan for regulating and taxing short-term rentals. The United States Department of the Interior Bureau of Indian Affairs Olympic Peninsula Agency sent in a notice of non-gaming land acquisition application for the Squawson Island Tribe. The Department of Natural Resources South Puget Sound Region sent notice that there are no plans to move the Harstein Island Timber Sale to Auction in the immediate future. John and Carolyn Watts sent in a letter of concern regarding preserving the Harstein Island Flats timber. The Washington State Liquor and Cannabis Board sent in a special occasion liquor license for the Sailor Sea Rotary Club of Mason County. And Hood Canal Communications sent in a notice of rate increases that will go into effect April 1st, 2024.
Thank you. Next up, item number 4.2 is our onsite sewage advisory committee vacancy news release. Please come forward and tell us who you are, please.
Ian Tracy, Environmental Allpender. The Mason County Board of Commissioners is seeking applicants for the onsite sewage advisory committee. The committee provides recommendations to the Board of Commissioners related to onsite sewage subject system permitting, policy, and regulations. The committee has vacancies for two citizen positions and one subject designer position. Please contact the Commissioner's Office or visit https://masoncountywa.gov/forums/ advisory/ advisoryboardapp.pdf. I'd like to apply.
Thank you. Next up is item number 4.3, Mason County Board of Health vacancies news release. Mr. Director?
Yeah, good morning.
Morning.
Dave Wyndham, Mason County Public Health Director. The Mason County Commissioners are seeking applicants to fill up to five open positions on the Mason County Board of Health, BOH. Up to two positions in the category of consumers of public health, consumers of public health means the category of persons consisting of county or health district residents who have self-identified as having significant health inequities or having lived experiences with public health-related programs. Persons with a fiduciary obligation to a health facility or other health agency or material financial interest in the rendering of health services may not be selected as a non-elected member of the local Board of Health representing consumers of health. The Board of Health has, excuse me, the Board of Health also has one open position for a stakeholder member representing the following types of organizations located in the county. Community-based organizations or nonprofits that work with populations experiencing health inequities in the county, active reserve or retired armed services members, the business community, the environmental public health regulated community. The Board of Health also seeks a member from the Squawson Island Tribe and one member from the Squawcomish Indian Tribe for dedicated Board of Health positions. The Board of Health members serve three-year terms and meet bimonthling during business hours at the county offices in Shelton. Applicants must be residents of Mason County. Interested persons are encouraged to apply by completing the advisory board form. They can be downloaded from our website, or by calling the Commissioner's Office at 427-9670, extension 419. Completed applications should be submitted to the Commissioner's Office at 411 North Fifth Street, Shelton. Positions are open until filled. If there are questions about these positions, please contact me at 427-9670, extension 260, or by email at dwyndham@masoncountywa.gov.
Thank you. Next up, item number 4.4, herbicide maintenance program notice, news release.
Morning Commissioners, Loretta Swanson, Public Works and Utilities and Waste Management Director. Mason County Department of Public Works will be beginning spring application of herbicides for vegetation control along county roads, weather permitting, in April. For a detailed list of the roads affected by the herbicide application program, please visit the County Public Works Herbicide Spray Program webpage, www.masoncountywa.gov, or contact the Mason County Public Works at 360-427-9670, extension 450. Property owners that are adjacent to the areas to be sprayed that do not want the spraying to take place may enroll in our owner-will-maintain program by contacting Public Works. These property owners who have already, or those property owners, excuse me, who have already enrolled in the program and designated their property as no spray will not need to contact the Public Works Office. Their property will not be sprayed.
Thank you. Next up, item number 4.5, Board of Equalization vacancy. Becky?
Mason County, Becky Rogers, Mason County Human Resources. The Board of Mason County Commissioners is seeking applications to fill a regular member position and an alternate member position on the Mason County Board of Equalization. The regular member position term ends on May 31, 2026. The alternate member position term ends on May 31, 2025. Applicants must reside in Mason County. The Board of Equalization is a three-member board appointed by the Mason County Commissioners. Two alternate member positions also may be selected. The Board's responsibility is to ensure that all property valuations are at 100% market value so an equitable tax assessment can be established. Taxpayers may appeal their assessments, including assessments of real and personal property, horse land, timber, and open space. The Board also considers denial of senior citizen property tax exemptions. Taxpayers can file a petition with the Board of Equalization and a hearing will be scheduled to present their appeal of their assessment for timely filed and completed petitions. Depending on the number of appeals heard each year, the Board may meet up to three days a week throughout the year. Board members are paid $100 per DM when in session. As required by RCW 84.48.042, the successful applicant must attend training provided by the Washington State Department of Revenue within one year following appointment or reappointment. Interested citizens may obtain an application at the Mason County Commissioners Office, 411 North Fifth Street, Shelton, or by calling Shelton 360 or 279670, extension 380, or visit the Mason County website at www.masoncountywa.gov. The positions are open until filled with the first review, March 29, 2024.
Thank you. Next up, item number 4.6, Clerk's Office has a news release regarding hours. Mr. Clerk?
Charles Rhodes, Mason County Clerk. We are extremely proud of this news release because it's been a year. The Clerk's Office update is as follows. Effective 3/18/2024, the Superior Court Clerk's Office will remain open additionally from 12 to 1:00. Front counter will be manned by deputy clerks from 8:30 to 4:30 without interruption. Extending our hours will better serve our community, allowing our customers to do business during their lunchtime without having to wait for documents any longer than necessary. This is, I am now fully staffed. I will be bringing one individual up to the front during lunch hour. We will alternate their lunches. I will handle as secondary up front at this point. So, that being said, if there's any questions or comments, please, I'd love to hear them.
Okay, thank you, Charles. All right, is there any other correspondence to come before this board? Okay, hearing none, we will move over to item number five, which is our open forum for citizens' input. This is your opportunity as a citizen to talk to the commission and the public regarding any issue that is not on the agenda. If it is on the agenda, we ask that you wait, and you'll be given an opportunity to speak at the time when it comes up on the agenda. If it's in the action agenda, you'll be given the opportunity to pull it off so you can have an opportunity to speak. With that being said, I want to remind everybody, there's a three-minute maximum. And with that being said, at three minutes, remembering that there's sometimes a lot of people that want to talk, there's a 15-minute time limit for all of it. So with that being said, I'm going to begin inside the room first, and then I'll move to Zoom afterwards. So, inside the room now, is there anybody who would like to speak to the commission on any item not on the agenda? Please come forward, state your name and perhaps where you're from, and go ahead.
Dean Jewitt, lifelong Mason County member, proud member, I should say. I love our county, I love our city. I'm up here to have conversations about our homeless and behavior health that we have in the county and the city. It's all, we deal with all of it. If you drive out Highway 3, you see it regularly every single day. So I want to talk about the camps, what we can do, how we clear them, can we clear them, the permission, what we have to go through, and obviously ask your assistance. Over in Olympia, they spent $700,000 on putting rocks on Wheeler Road and the Hobbie Lobby area. That was just the cost of the rocks. I think it was a total of a $1.2 million process to get that area cleaned up. But how did it get there? Anybody that ever raised cattle, anybody that ever did any gardening, you plant a weed, you bring in Scotch Bloom, whatever it is, what happens? If you don't monitor it and you don't keep it down, it explodes. So that's what we have going on now, I believe, in our county because we have other counties and areas that shut down, and then those people, they come into our area because of the services. I've been contacted by numerous concerned citizens offering assistance. I'm very big on social media. I say what's on my mind and what's, I hope that our county and our citizens also believe. I listened in on a homeless and behavior health meeting last week or the week before. I didn't speak to on it because I just, you know, I like to do my due diligence, make sure that I'm well-versed on what I'm going to talk about. I heard a lot of people talking about a lot of good things that they were doing for our, that particular subset of our community. But what I didn't hear is what about the tax-paying citizens, the business owners, and community members that are negatively impacted by these things that we see? So what's our plan on those? I believe we have some discretionary funds or some funds available. If there's some volunteerism that needs to happen, then let's jump in, let's figure out what we can do. On the complaints about camps and things, what I was kind of curious about, do we handle those a proactive approach? Or is it a complaint-driven basis? If it's a complaint-driven basis, we should probably take a look at maybe seeing if we could do something with a proactive. I'm very proactive in my community. I'll drive around, I'll find them, and I'll report them. Building 10 of the county, you guys have had numerous people camping underneath the Alcoks and stuff there. The police, I guess what I'm asking there too is, do the county buildings have a no trespassing order on file with the Shelton Police Department so that they can proactively, without having it called in, go and clear those individuals out of there when needed? It makes a big mess, so thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you, Dean. Okay, is there anybody else who would like to, Mr. Van Busker?
Commissioners, good morning. Ken Van Busker. I live on the old Belfair Highway. Good morning. I come before you today as one of the mayors of Belfair, many mayors of Belfair. Almost 20 years ago, Gary Parrott and myself came before the Board of County Commissioners almost every week. We came before the pack, and we testified about the proposed Belfair sewer at that time, many times. We were the only two residents of Belfair that submitted extensive comments to the wastewater, the final wastewater EIS. Mr. Parrott focused a lot of his comments on the declaration of severe public health hazard myth, and I focused my comments on prioritizing efficient urban services, including construction of the bypass first, maintaining the rural character of the Union River Valley, identifying protecting streams, wetlands, and the Cara, and also costs versus benefit of different build alternatives. The one alternative that I suggested at that time was inclusion of the SKEA alternative, now they call it PISC. The alternative was not considered at that time due to, quote, "uncertainties associated with scheduling of preparing intergovernmental agreements." Mr. Parrott and I were both able to convince the project engineers to site a pump station for the sewer away from the edge of the Theller Wetlands and move it uphill. Once they started construction of the sewer, I got an urgent phone call from Emmett Doby. Unfortunately, there was inadequate pre-construction surveys done, and they encountered extensive contaminated soil from the numerous historical gas stations in Belfair, and he wanted to know where the rest of them all were. That error resulted in a big cost overrun, and there's still, the sites monitored still today. Here we are 20 years later, and we're finally investing our development on the plateau where it should be, benefiting both Kitsap, Mason County, and beyond. I recently read the 2020 State Auditor's Report on Mason County and the Belfair Sewer Fund, and in that I discovered that the county responded to the auditor, that they would continue partnership and financial agreement work with both the city and the Port of Bremerton, and also the county sought and secured $12 million of legislative appropriations in grants and loans. Working with partners and MOUs, the county is now working on finalizing a design and location for sewer extension to PISC using the freight corridor alignment. On behalf of my neighbors, and if I can indulge just one more minute, on behalf of my neighbors and other residents of the old Belfair Highway and the Union River Valley, I would like to commend and acknowledge the County Commission, the county staff, the city in Port of Bremerton, and our state representatives and legislature for working together to finally make both the sewer and the freight corridor a reality. I searched all over for an appropriate gift, and I would like you to accept this as a small token of my appreciation, or our appreciation for your actions for the future of the counter. Only have ones, you'll have to share. No, I got more than, I got more than.
I remember that, I know what this is, I remember it. I actually remember this. Who had those made up?
I got a package for each of you.
Who had those made up? Well, no, it's, it's.
I found them. They're, they're.
Belfair.
No, they're made in, in fight.
No, but I mean Belfair clothing.
Yes, so those are for you, and I'll have plenty more at the ribbon cutting for the new sewer treatment plant or pump station. So, thank you very much for indulging me.
All right, is there anybody else inside the room that would like to speak on an issue not on the agenda?
Dean, maybe just take notes on getting a little extra time if you bring gifts. I don't know how the city's going to feel about that.
Again, anybody else in the room? Hearing none, I'm going to turn to Zoom. Is there anybody in Zoom that would like to speak on an issue not on the agenda? If it's not on the agenda, I'll ask you to raise your hand now if you know how, and I'll call on you. If you do not know how to raise your hand, if you would like to unmute yourself and speak, this would be your time. Please unmute yourself and say your name. Didn't she say she wanted to speak? On the hearing, okay. All right, hearing none, seeing none, we are going to go ahead and move forward. Next up is the adoption of the agenda.
Mr. Chair, I move adoption of today's agenda as presented.
I will second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion carries. There are no minutes, so we're going to move on to the approval of the action agenda. All items listed under the action agenda will be written, will be read to the public, and you'll be given an opportunity after we do, we read into the record, to ask any question that you may have to help you decide whether to have it taken off for a separate vote. But I want you to know, if you already know you want to take it off for a separate vote, then that's what we'll do, and you'll get an opportunity to speak at that time, and you'll get a chance to see the commissioners' individual votes on that issue. With that being said, I'm going to go ahead and take item 8.1 through 8.5, and if you will take 8.6 through 8.11. 8.1, Approval of Warrants and Treasurers Electronic Remittance Claims Clearing Fund, warrants number 8103113 through 8103332. The amount, $1,390,267.04. Direct Deposit Fund, warrants number 104138 through 104546. The amount, $930,418.88. Salary Clearing Fund, warrants number 7007954 through 7007980. The amount, $628,183.71. Treasurers Electronic Remittance, $462,688.47. Item number 8.2, Approval of the Resolution Set in a Hearing Date with the Hearing Examiner for Wednesday, April 24, 2024, at 1:00 p.m. via Zoom to Consider Public Comment on Road Vacation Number 418. Item number 8.3, Approval of Resolution Set in a Hearing Date with the Hearing Examiner for Wednesday, April 24, 2024, at 1:00 p.m. via Zoom to Consider Public Comment on Road Vacation Number 417. Item number 8.4, Approval of the Following. 2024 Mason County Heritage Grants Mason County Historical Society for $3,820. Matlock Historical Society for $400. McCreeve House Museum of Hood Canal for $5,000. Peninsula Railway and Lumberman's Museum for $5,000. Pickering Homemakers Club DBA Pickering Community Club for $2,441. And Squawcomish Grange Number 379 for $5,000 for a total amount of $21,661 even. Item number 8.5, Approval of the Notification of Final Costs for County Road Construction Projects Completed in 2023, Performed by County Forces.
Item 8.6, Approval for the Chair to Sign the Road Levy Certification for 2024 of the County Road Administration Board's Reporting System. Item 8.7, Approval for the Chair to Execute the Adopted Road Agreements Between Mason County and the Following Volunteer Organizations. RR Ben Breakfast assigning Golden Pheasant Road from Milepost 0.07 to 1.16, and Story Road from Milepost 0.00 to 0.66 as their designated adopted area. And Greatview Community Association assigning Greatview Loop Road from Milepost 0.00 to 5.38 as their designated adopted area. Item 8.8, Approval to Purchase an RB Cover from the Foothills Park Host, Laura Nelson, in the amount of $5,000. Item 8.9, Approval for the Chair to Sign the Professional Services Contract with BRCA, Trainer HL for Architect and Engineering Services for the Proposed Mason County Community Justice Center for a cost not to exceed $780,000. Item 8.10, Approval to Appoint Jim Morrell, Matt Mallory, Mary Jo Katie, and Jan Goodpastor to the Mason County Citizens Commission on Salaries for Elected Officials for a term that will expire December 31, 2026. And item 8.11, Approval of the Letters of Support for PUD-1's Appropriations Request to Fund Their Grid Resiliency Project, which includes Juristad Substation Engineering and Design and the Manzanito Water Storage Project.
Folks, now that this has all been read into the record, this is going to be your opportunity to ask any question you may have to help make you decide whether you want something taken off for a separate vote or not. With that being said, is there anybody in the room who has a question regarding any of the issues that would help you to decide whether to take it off for a separate vote? If so, please raise your hand and acknowledge yourself. I see none. On Zoom, is there anybody on Zoom who would like, who has a question that would help you to decide whether to have something taken off for a separate vote? If so, I'd ask you to unmute yourself, say your name, and I'll call on you. Hearing none? Now is your opportunity. Is there, Commissioner, is there any item you would like taken off for a separate vote?
There is not.
Neither for me. For the public, is there any item here in the room that you would like taken off for a separate vote? I see none. Out on Zoom land, is there any item that you would like taken off for a separate vote? If so, please unmute yourself, say your name, and I will call on you. I hear none. So with that, Mr. Chair, or Commissioner, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move approval of action items 8.1 through 8.11 as read.
I will second. It has been moved in second for the approval of the action agenda in its entirety, item number 8.1 through 8.11. Any comments?
None for me.
Okay, just again, thank you for those citizens that jumped up and was willing to step up for the Citizen Salary Commission, and appreciate all the hard work that everybody's done, especially on the heritage grant. Thank you for that as well. With that being said, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries, the action agenda is approved. Okay, next up is other business, department heads and elected officials. Are there any department heads who would like to speak at this time, please? Department head or elected officials who would like to speak at this time?
Good morning, Commissioner Steve Dunkel, Mason County.
Good morning.
I've got two things to share this morning. If there, first of all, our Fraud Know-Fei service from Tyler Technologies is now live. So if anybody is a property owner here in Mason County, I encourage you to sign up to the free Fraud Know-Fei subscription service available on the Auditor's Reporting Website. Secondly, today's presidential primary. I encourage everybody to get out and vote. We've received a little over 13,000 ballots so far, both here and at our freshly open temporary vote center in Belfair. So, both vote centers will be open until 8:00 p.m. today. If anybody needs help with voting, replacement ballot, lost ballot, what have you, we're there to serve, so thank you very much.
Before you leave, Mr. Hunter, I get so many phone calls. Clarifying, if I'm mistaken, the auditor is not in control of whether or not you have to declare a party. That was done way above your pay grade and sent down to us for.
That is correct. I'm not in control of whether or not a voter has to declare their party affiliation. That's a mechanism put in place at the request of the major political parties. They want to track who's voting for their candidates because, basically, what we're doing is running two separate elections, one for each major party, so that they can use the results of the vote totals to select delegates leading up to the selection of their presidential candidate.
And does Mason County have any other option but to do it that way?
We have no other option.
Thank you.
State law.
I just thought of letting, because I'm sure we all get phone calls on it.
It's been a hot topic this election. If anybody else has other questions or comments, feel free to call anytime. Thank you.
Are there any other department heads or elected officials who would like to comment at this time that are in the room? Yes, sir?
Mark Neary, Mason County Administrator. We received a request from PUD-3 last night, very late in the process, but they're asking the commission to sign a letter of support to Representative Kilmer for his community projects grants that he has. They're submitting a grant request for Goldsboro Switching Station, including engineering designs and the purchase of materials. And they need to get this submitted before the end of the week. And so I was wondering if the commissioners would entertain signing off on that PUD-3 letter. It's late, understand if you say no, but definitely wanted to bring it before you.
What's that, let's take a moment, just you and me here for a second. Although I'm supportive of the project, I've never in all the years have we ever just taken something on the fly here to make for a motion. If we do, we probably set a precedent, and that makes me nervous. And also, it has not been put out to the public for them to be able to have a comment, so I'm reluctant, but.
I agree, and I'll just say, I think we're wildly inconsistent on our letter of support process. I mean, we've had ones that, you know, like if we were to go along with this, this would be, I think, not a judgment on the project at all, but I think it would be wildly inappropriate to entertain a letter of support on the fly like this. We've held others, even this year, where we've had them, you know, come in through the process, go through the regular two-week deal and do it that way. We've had others that, you know, have been treated differently. And so I think, I'm not in support of signing the letter today. We can maybe figure out if Congressman Kilmer would accept the letter after their submission. We can just directly submit to his office, that might be an option to consider. You know, and I get that there are tight turnarounds, but I just think we need to be, we need to try to be a little bit more consistent in how we handle these things.
Absolutely.
You know, and still want to partner on things, but we got to treat everybody as equally as possible when they come in and ask for these things.
100% agree, and I will respond to PUD-3 and let them know that I can brief the commissioners on this. I can brief the commissioners on this specific request on next Monday, or actually, we don't have a meeting next Monday, hence why. This was unique, but um.
But here's one thing, if if it is absolutely necessary, I haven't even read it, so.
Yeah.
Have you read it?
No. You guys haven't received it.
So I, there's no way I could do that anyway, but if it was absolutely a necessity and such a great thing. I would have no problem coming into the county, cause one of us has to be at the county seat. And we could do a Zoom one to uh with the twenty four hour notice to uh get it. Taken care of, but. Uh definitely, I would say, if you don't mind, with future reference to to any future meeting, that. I don't think you should even come up to us in this meeting, because it was not allowed, uh it was not specifically put on the agenda. The commissioners did not agree for it to come forward, and that's how we put things on the agenda.
Correct.
So for for future notice, uh that would not even be allowed in the future. What do you think about that?
Yeah, I would prefer that to not happen, yeah.
All right, is there any other uh uh department head or elected official who would like to speak at this time? You just wanting to get your projects done to get, yeah. Is there anybody out on Zoom land that's a department head or elected official who would like to speak at this time? If so, unmute yourself, say hi. Hearing none, we're gonna go ahead and move forward and close that aspect of it. And we're gonna move into our public hearing. Item ten point one, public hearing, consider amendments, Mason County Code Title Six. Sanitary Code Regarding Water Adequacy. Staff Ian Tracy.
Morning Commissioners, uh Ian Tracy, Environmental Health Manager. Um the regulation change we have uh proposed today. Uh well, first of all, the the Title Six dot six eight regulation, um the primary purpose of it is to ensure. That public health uh needs are met when there's building projects that occur. Uh so that people have adequate water for sanitation, um health and minimum uh. Needs when it comes to the operation of a typical household. And we're usually looking at uh the operation of a a standard three bedroom home when we're divided. Um this regulation has that captured in it as well as a few other items uh that were added back in twenty eighteen. The. The Hearst response um was a regulation that. Added of a maximum usage on properties depending on what RIA they're in. And that part of the regulation, we would like to move to Title Seventeen, because it's a. Portion of the regulation that comes from the Growth Management Act, and so it's more appropriate for it to be um housed under Title Seventeen, so. Part of the regulatory goals we have is to move that to Title Seventeen. Uh and then there are two more substantive substantive changes that we have. One is to change the minimum amount of water required uh for a typical development. Currently require eight hundred gallons per day per connection, and we'd like to change that to four hundred gallons per day per connection, which is. More consistent with uh what Kitsap and Thurston do, as well as being more consistent with the septic code. The septic code um estimates that there's going to be approximately three hundred sixty gallons of sewage generated. By a typical three bedroom home. And so if you take that plus a little buffer extra for other water usage, that's not going directly down to the septic system. Um four hundred gallons uh we feel is appropriate, and like I said, uh consistent with Kitsap and Thurston. And then the other thing that we are adding is a requirement for a clean bacterial sample for Group B water systems. And that's to correct a um. A gap in the regulation that occurred back when they deregulated Group B wells. Uh Group B wells used to have to require uh annual testing. And when that requirement went away, that uh left us, you know, kind of flat footed, cause when we would do our reviews. A Group B uh well was assumed to be, you know, in compliance, because they had um, you know, yearly testing requirements. When those yearly testing requirements went away for Group B wells. We still had the uh regulation that we just wouldn't look at any kind of uh water quality sampling. On their, on their proposal, so now we're just asking that they do what any uh individual well would do is to. Get a um, get a clean bacterial test for their development project. Uh and then the rest of the changes that are occurring in the regulation are uh updates to. Uh update our language around uh waivers and variances um. And appeals and to just update language to make it consistent with current regulations.
Okay, uh questions for staff regarding the presentation? I have one, please give me a breakdown of Title Seventeen.
Uh Title Seventeen, I'm not an expert on it, uh Kilmer's more of an expert on it than than I am, but uh Title Seventeen is the planning regulations. Um and has regulations related to resource protection.
Okay, but not uh an adjustment to the comprehensive plan based on that? I'm asking you on that, is it?
Title Seventeen is the development regulations where the zoning codes exist for um all of the rural area. As well as Shelton, Allen and Belfair.
Okay.
Uh and it's what implements the comprehensive plan.
Okay, I don't mind as long as the comprehensive plan refers to it, it's not included. Just, I just wanna make sure, we'll, and we'll discuss that when comprehensive plan comes up, so there's not a confusion there. I just wanna make sure we're not doing it right now. Okay, uh.
Will that also be part of the ten point two discussion?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, so uh is there any other questions for staff regarding presentation? Hearing none, I'm gonna go ahead and move into uh public testimony. Is there any public who would like to testify at this time? Yes, go ahead and unmute yourself and say your name, please.
Okay, nobody's in the room wants to testify, so we're already with Zoom?
I don't know, I just want to you first, cause I knew you were there, sorry, go ahead.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Uh hi, I am Erica Marbet. I work for the Squawson Island Tribe. Uh do you need my address or anything? Okay, so uh I submitted comments to McKenzie yesterday regarding six point six eight and. Uh and this, and this transition of of water adequacy or water regulation to Title Seventeen, first thing I would like to say is. Um the tribe would like to meet with Cal Rowan about the moving of code from one. From this code to Title Seventeen, so uh just that's a request to meet. But just a few comments on uh chapter six point six eight. The tribe submitted this yesterday, as I said, but uh let's start with scope of coverage. Uh the tribe would like to see the cope of, scope of coverage remain the same. With exemptions limited to all projects that will not result in increased water usage. The the edits that were made to the code uh exempt everything, all projects. And we would like to see it as uh uh those that do not increase water usage. Next, uh determination of adequacy of building permits, there was a, there was language in the code that. Um reviewed for for compliance to ensure that water sources would not interfere with existing water rights. And that was struck from the code in these edits, and so we'd like to see that remain. Finally, uh regarding waivers of regulations. Uh there are no technical criteria or standards to evaluate whether a waiver should be issued or not. The 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 criteria for for waivers are currently like about, like, do you have this paperwork in place? And have you delegate or, you know, have you talked to so and so and then submitted the necessary forms? And other than that, though, there's no criteria about or conditions of under which a waiver could be requested. From these regulations. So again, we'd like to meet with Cal Rowan about Title Seventeen, this paired movement of code to that title. And that is all I have for comments today.
Thank you. Is there anybody uh in the room, which I think everybody here is an employee, that has any comments regarding uh uh this issue? Any testimony? Hearing none? Is there anybody else in Zoom land that would like to testify? If so, please unmute yourself and say your name. Hearing none, I will, yes.
Mister Chair, I was just wondering if if Ian had any response to the comments that were submitted?
Sure. Um so I'll just go in order that Erica mentioned her comments. So the scope of coverage, uh the removal of that. Increased water usage portion from the regulation was because of the move of um. The Hearst response portion to Title Seventeen. That portion no longer has any bearing on our review. Because at this point, we're just reviewing under, under the the new proposed version of six dot six eight. We're only reviewing the project for um the minimum needs for health and sanitation. So we're not, we're not looking at how much water someone is using um in a project. As long as their their water source is appropriate to the water that they're using. So if it's a, if it's an individual well, they're already operating under an exemption um from ecology. And Mason County has no, no regulations for um, you know, water rights when it comes to. That we have no control over what their water rate is, whether they're wa- operating under an exemption, but if they're operating under an exemption, then. That's, that's usually where that's covered, and the increased water usage is addressed by Kell's regulation, which then. Dictates, you know, that that maximum usage under the Hearst response. Um so that's, that's why that was removed for that portion, cause it doesn't make sense for us to, you know, if someone. Adds in addition to their house, it doesn't make sense for us to make sure that they still have, you know, safe, healthy drinking water for that structure. Cause it's an existing structure with safe, healthy drinking water is previously established. Uh the uh next item, determination of adequacy for billing permits, uh that's six dot six eight oh four oh. The portion that uh Eric was referring to, um that basically says that um. Their their project, if it's using a two-party well or an individual well, is not going to interfere with existing water rights. That again is a ecology regulation that we have no control over. Uh a individual well is already operating under the ecology exemption of five thousand gallons or less. Um and the same thing applies to two-party wells. And the water that we're saying they have to supply would be, if it was a two-party well, a total of eight hundred gallons from that exempt uh status well. Um so, you know, again, it's, that portion is related to the portion that's moving to Title Seventeen. Um and then the portion related to uh waivers and appeals. That language is standard language for all of our Title Six regulations, and my goal is I move through the Title Six regulations and update each one. Is to update the process, so that those, those portions of the regulation establish a process by which someone could apply. For a waiver. It doesn't mean they would be granted a waiver, but it's, it establishes the process that they would uh go through to. To, you know, apply for a waiver. Um and whenever we, you know, as, whenever we do get waivers, we don't get waivers very often, but whenever we do. Uh get waivers, they have to have some kind of mitigation, so if there's something that they can't meet in the code, they have to have. Something else they're doing to to mitigate for that that portion they can't meet, that will make it as protective. So the, these changes in that, in that regulation or in that uh those waivers and appeal section are not. Creating new ways for someone to um get a waiver. They're simply. Updating the language so that it's clear what the process is for someone to apply for a waiver.
If you don't mind, I'm gonna close the public testimony. I just wanna make sure I'm closing public testimony at this time, so we can have commissioner deliberations and discussions regarding this. One of the things that caught my attention is, there seems to be a request that uh. I'm, and I'm, I'm asking, that uh. They have an opportunity to reach out and to speak with you uh specifically. And with that, that means that we may not have, we may not have finished everything at this point. Even appreciating all the answers that they're accurate and stuff, I'm just wondering if that's a piece that we've left out and if maybe we should postpone for a couple of weeks.
So I guess my thinking on that is, we've had this hearing noticed for quite a while, and. We received comments at four forty five last night, when there's been weeks of opportunity to make that effort to have a meeting. And I'm comfortable and confident in the feedback that I got in response to the comments, that I'm comfortable moving forward.
How was you, when, when were you contacted to have a discussion?
Just now. I mean, just now.
No, uh uh, no, that part's closed, I'm sorry, Erica.
Okay.
Go ahead, I'll back you.
Uh Mister Chair, I move uh approval and adoption of amendments to Mason County Code Title Six as described in attachment A.
I will second. It has been moved and seconded for the approval of the amendments to Mason County Code Title Six. Sanitary Code Regarding Water Adequacy. Uh any further di- discussion deliberation? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion carries. That one is closed. Next up is item number ten point two. Approval of the ordinance uh amending Mason County Code Section one seven point zero three point zero two zero. Development Regulations Regarding Water Supply Requirements. We will start with a testament or with a staff uh presentation, Cal Rowan.
Good morning, Cal Rowan with Mason County Community Development. Um the planning department is uh has worked with the environmental health department on. Existing regulations and um some housekeeping on moving those regulations into the appropriate place, so as. Ian had mentioned in the earlier public hearing, uh there's a section under Title Six that really has to do. With growth management, a Hearst response, water adequacy, or water um supply requirements. That are really under the purview of the planning department um under Title Seventeen, so we are moving that section. Uh that has to do with um the Hearst response, which is um. Uh any new residential development, whether that's an expansion, accessory dwelling unit, new residents. Um that is going to connect to a well that was constructed on or after January nineteenth, twenty eighteen. They will have to comply with um a set of regulations, and we do that already, our permit assistance center. Uh we have permit technicians that have been doing this. Uh Dave Wyndham left the room, but I think since the twenty eighteen is when we implemented this. Uh so we have been um following these regulations for the last six years. We're just technically moving it um out of the purview of environmental health and Public Health Department and into community development. Where it belongs. Um and so if there are issues moving forward, we have the correct staff and, you know, to to respond to that. Um so it is a bit of a housekeeping. And uh I will stop there, see if there's any questions.
Okay, is there any questions in the room? I'll start there, sorry, last time, uh regarding the testimony of staff? Any questions in the room regarding the testimony? Hearing none, are there any questions out in Zoom land regarding the testimony? You'll be given an opportunity to testify, but anything regarding this uh presentation? If so, unmute yourself and say your name, please. Hearing none, I will close that part of it. Oh, did you have? I'll, I'll close that part and move into uh public testimony. Is there anybody in the room who would like to testify regarding this issue? Hearing none, uh anybody in Zoom land, please unmute yourself, say your name, and I will call on you. Erica, please.
Hi, thanks, okay, sorry, sorry for being off uh um. Hearing with the last comment, uh but and I'll say it now, just um. Yes, you did open the public testimony a while ago about this transition. Um no, I don't have the capacity to to receive and respond quickly, so. I I have not talked to Cal, but uh it's passed six point six eight, and now I will reach out to Cal. Uh had to have a meeting about Title Seventeen or, yeah, Title Seventeen, so all good.
Okay.
I will be emailing you. That's it.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in the public who would like to testify at this time? If so, on on Zoom, unmute yourself? Hearing none, anybody else in the room? I will close public testimony and move to Commissioner deliberations.
Uh Mister Chair, I move approval and adoption of amendments to the Mason County Code Title Seventeen. Section seventeen point zero three point zero two zero as described in attachment A.
I will second. Approve, it is moved and seconded for the approval of uh the ordinance amending Mason County Code Section seventeen. Point zero three point zero two zero Development Regulations Regarding Water Supply Requirements. Any comments? Okay, I have one little comment, and that is, uh this is not set in stone, if something, uh Erica, if something comes up that is just earth. Moving, uh uh Cal has the ability to bring it back to us again, just so you know. Uh and I've, I can tell you, she's always been very open minded about uh those types of things when they occur, so. If there is uh anything that you think should come up later, please give her a call and we'll move forward from that point on. With that, uh all in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? The ayes have it. Okay, next up. I will open the hearing. This is a public. This is a public hearing to consider the ordinance adopting Mason County Capital Improvement Program, CIP, for the six-year financial period of twenty twenty-four through twenty twenty-nine. Staff, Marissa Watson.
Thank you. Good morning, commissioners. RCW thirty-six seventy A seventy, Section three D, calls for counties to draft at least a six-year plan that will finance capital facilities within projected funding capacities and clearly identifies sources of public money for such purpose. The Capital Improvement Program was previously combined with our Capital Facilities Element, which is our twenty-year horizon outlook on capital facility planning. Due to the requirement to update the Capital Improvement Program, the six-year financing plan more frequently, we extracted that information to put in an appendix to the element just for ease of editing going forward. This document should be referenced for the most current CIP information. The Capital Facilities Element addresses all other requirements of RCW thirty-six seventy A, Section seventy, regarding what a capital facilities plan shall consist of and will be brought forward to the PAC and the BOCC during the Comprehensive Plan Periodic Update Review. The PAC heard this topic at their December eighteenth and January twenty-second PAC meetings and all recommended approval, recommended to the board approval of the document. A SEPA non-project checklist was prepared for the project and a formal SEPA determination of nonsignificance was made on December first. The comment period closed on December fifteenth and staff received one comment from the PUD that just mentioned coordination between the utility and public works when going forward with these capital facilities projects. Public notice for this hearing was published in the Shelton Journal on February twenty-second and twenty-ninth. And staff has not received any public comments on the document, neither during the time we had the Planning Advisory Commission meetings nor when it was advertised for this board hearing. So the first year of the six-year plan has already, the budget for that has already been approved by the commissioners. And there is an estimate of sixty-two million, three hundred and fourteen thousand dollars worth in capital project costs for that six-year period. You'll note in there in the summary in the staff report, it talks about, it talks about as the plan is currently outlined, there would be a deficit of eight million, six hundred and one thousand dollars in required funding. And it would grow to nineteen million, five hundred and twenty-eight thousand if grants and loans indicated within the plan as to be secured remain unsecured. Also, though, I'd like to mention that some of those more expensive projects, like some of them are parks projects and they're kind of planned for that last year of the plan. So additional grant funding is usually determined a little bit closer to that time. Or else, some of the questions at our PAC meeting were, you know, that people were concerned with there being a deficit. We had to let them know, you know, this is updated annually and sometimes projects change. They fall off. Our new grant funding is found to make up for that deficit. But with that, if there's any other questions?
So Marissa, I'm under the understanding that there was concerns of that. I'm glad you brought that up and you brought it forward yourself because that shows that you did hear what they were saying. I understand that they, although they were reluctant, they agreed to move forward with it this year because they're going to take a longer look at it and try to clean that up next year.
Yes, I think the concern was too is, well, we are working on a prioritization matrix. So getting a little more information from departments on why they chose one project over another, that I think was their biggest concern. And so I'm working with them to get their ideas on what they want to, what kind of questions they want to see answered when we bring this document back to them the next time.
Well, and hopefully they participate because that was always the issue. Both me and Commissioner Shute have both served on that planning. And I know that we were both dealing with the same things when we were on it. So the idea that there's a chance that it gets cleared up is a great thing. So I just wanted to tell you, I personally appreciate that you have taken it on just like you did, just throw it out there upfront. It meant a lot to me. So my question is, how did you get so awesome? Commissioner Shute, do you have any questions?
That was very good presentation.
Okay, is there anybody in the room that has any questions for staff regarding the presentation?
I just have a comment.
Yes.
So one of the challenges that we have in capital facilities plans is with many different types of funding that exist out there, it requires us to have projects listed within the capital facilities portion of the comprehensive plan in order to qualify for the specific types of funding that we have out there. And so the county, like many other counties, try to include a pretty broad spectrum of projects.
But this is an opportunity to ask her questions.
Understood.
We can give you testimony time because I agree with you, but.
Okay.
Okay, is there anybody else?
You state that in the form of a question?
Isn't it true?
Is there anybody in Zoom land that has any questions for staff regarding the presentation? Hearing none, I'm going to close that, ask pocket and move into public testimony. In the room, Mark.
To sum it up, I appreciate Marissa's work on this and the planning commission's attention to the details associated with this. I do think that we continually improve it, something we look at on an annual basis. The departments and offices that are included in this definitely have the opportunity to get involved more and provide additional detail. Really love the idea of prioritization matrix and being able to justify why we prioritize things in a certain way. And just the fact that we want to make sure that we have potential projects listed in this plan so that if, in fact, something happens that we didn't think about, we have the ability to utilize these funding resources to accomplish those goals.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in the room who would like to testify? Anybody in Zoom land who would like to testify? If so, please unmute yourself and say your name. Nobody left. Okay, we will close public testimony and we will move to commissioner deliberation.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I move approval of the ordinance adopting the Mason County Capital Improvement Plan for the six-year financing period of twenty twenty-four through twenty twenty-nine.
I will second. It has been moving second for the adoption of the ordinance of adopting Mason County Capital Improvement Program, CIP, for the six-year financing period of twenty twenty-four through twenty twenty-nine discussion.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Chair. So just thanks to Marissa and our planning commission for all the work on this. It's a big document, has a lot of projects in there, is a lot of complexity to these projects. So they always do a great job of trying to get as much pertinent information out as they can. And so just appreciate the work on that. And, you know, this really is a blueprint. Mark was kind of mentioning that we have things on here that, you know, not because we aren't going to do them or don't want to do them, but sometimes they're a little bit further off because it takes a little while to build funding and support for those types of things. And so it really is a helpful document. And I won't be here next year. So this is also a good opportunity to say this is your blueprint for next legislative session. What on here can we plug in in terms of grant funding to help go after the projects? We had a really successful legislative session again this year, thanks to our legislators. And whenever we're able to move a zero under the grants and portion of the capital facilities plan and plug grant money into there, that saves ratepayers and taxpayers money. Here at the local level, it allows us to use our REIT funding more flexibly so that we can get more done and leverage those dollars. And it's particularly helpful when we see dips in our REIT revenue, like we are now, you know, have for the past several months. So it's a great tool for us to be able to really start thinking now. I know session just ended on Thursday, but the reality is we do have a lobbyist and we have an engaged legislative delegation. And so the time is now to start thinking about what do we do next? Where do we go from here and build on that success that we've had? And we couldn't do it without our citizen planners on the planning commission helping out. So we're just really excited to see what you were all able to accomplish next legislative session.
And for me, I want to thank the citizens, that planning commission, they put a lot of effort and a lot of time. And I want to thank them. Again, I want to thank you. This is, seems to be another one where we are heaping praise on you for a job well done again and again, which also means that we need to do that for your boss, basically, because that doesn't happen. It's a chain reaction how it works. Good hiring, good leadership above cannot be forgotten. So anytime we give a compliment to the staff here, we need to give a compliment to the staff there as well. So thank you for your hard work on this. Well done. Again, with that being said, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, any opposed? The motion carries and that hearing is closed. Okay. Next up, board reports and calendars. Let's see, we'll figure out, Commissioner Shute.
Let's figure out the order of things here, right? So going forward today, have a MaceCom board meeting this afternoon. Later on this week, Criminal Justice Working Team, Mason County Opioid Stakeholders Group. And then I'll also be doing the employee town hall this week and maybe made Mary a little bit nervous because I asked for an opportunity to make it more interactive. So if you didn't have a submission of a question already and you're more inclined to ask that face to face tomorrow, then I am, that's the benefit of leaving.
I know, I was gonna say, you realize that that's the precedent. I hate those things and now he does this.
Parting gift to my seatmates here. Also have IT Steering Committee this week, sitting down with Green Diamond again. And also looking forward to next week, WASC virtual assembly. Have a code discussion with Kel and a constituent, Mason Transit, Hook Canal Coordinating Council, Thurston Mason, BH ASO. And I'll also be pinching for Commissioner Nellman at the canvassing board meetings on both Thursday the twenty-first and Friday the twenty-second. Back for briefings on the twenty-fifth with my bi-weekly check-in with BH ASO staff ahead of our commission meeting on the twenty-sixth.
Okay, I didn't know. That part's I'm glad because we've never heard back. So I still get to take care of something for my family. That's awesome. Thank you, Commissioner, for that. Last week or so, we had our utility workshop, which was excellent as we start to move forward and put some things together. I thank you. Rotary Facilities advisories for the school district, North Mason, Port Allen. Holly James with looking for low-income housing and other types of housing. Takeback Mason County, Left Board, and on and on and on. I have ORCA meeting, Olympic Regional Clean Air Authority, Rotary meeting. I have interviews with our, to interview our new health officer applicants. Mason Transit Authority, I will not be attending the canvassing board meeting. I will not be attending the certification because Commissioner Shute will. I have, we have a meeting in Russellwood in regards to the utility rates. And North Mason Community Voice brings us back and we start over again.
For the utility rate discussion, if, Mark, if you could, or McKenzie, I guess, you send out our weekly agenda, just if you could just, when you have all those dates finalized, just notice them on the weekly agenda thing that you put out for the week ahead. That way we're also covered on announcing that there might be a quorum there if it's in between our meetings. That'd be super helpful. Thank you.
So with that, that's all that I have except for maybe a virtual that I might come in conflict. I attend these virtual meetings sometimes that Commissioner Trask does. And I don't ever say anything. I just pop in, listen, and pop out. With that being said, I guess I'll entertain a motion.
We move to adjourn.
I'll second. We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.